Oh, of tonight's agenda for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-six. Thank you all, take care. Uh, staff, any changes?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. I've got two updates for tonight. Both of these items are already listed on the agenda. Um, we're just adding their report items to it. So the first one is consent item A. Um, the approval of licenses, there's two licenses that have been added. They're printed out and were sent to council earlier. And then the other addition is to other business item A, the voucher request pending approval for disbursement. The council also received that report in an email and it's printed out in front of you if you want to view it that way. Uh, those are my two additions for tonight and that's all.
Excellent. Counsel, anything you'd like to change with tonight's agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move that we approve, uh, the meeting agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no or nay. Tonight's agenda has been approved. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. So pursuant to council, council rules, one motion, non-debatable, will approve the recommendation noted. Any member of council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion on separate action. Such items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered immediately following the approval of the balance of the consent agenda. Counsel, anything that you'd like to move?
Mister Mayor, hearing none, I will move that we approve the consent agenda items A through G.
All those in.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no or nay. All right. Uh, tonight's consent agenda has been approved. So what have we approved? Approve. Uh, we approve, approved licenses. Uh, we approved Robbinsdale Wine and Spirits' monthly financial statements. Uh, the deputy registrar's monthly financial statements as well. Uh, we approved portable radios for the fire department. We authorized the mayor and the city manager to execute, uh, execute a memorandum, memo of understanding, or MOU, uh, with the pet under police security or PUPS program. Uh, considering a resolution for updating guidelines for attendance by interactive technology. And, uh, we authorized a resolution to set preliminary levy and schedule the date for truth and taxation, taxation budget meeting. All right. Next on the agenda, our presentations. Twenty twenty-six proposed general fund budget.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, council member. Uh, today we refer the proposed twenty twenty-six, uh, general fund and debt service priority tax levy. City is required to submit the proposed twenty twenty-six priority tax levy to Hanover County by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This levy would be used by Hanover County to prepare the truth and taxation. Notice that the county will mail to every citizen in November. Uh, so briefly, like today will be the ceiling not to exceed the limit for tax levy. We have time till the TNT is a recent taxation in December, first council session to lower it, but we cannot exceed what we said today. We'll discuss in presentation all detail about the twenty twenty-six budget. All right, agenda would go for some definition, some discussing about the revenue expenses, the debt service and general fund reserve. For estimated market value, it's basically what would be the value if the house would be sold? The market value of the property. For the market value exclusion, so this is basically like, what would be excluded from the taxation which is a homestead, so any property like below five hundred seventeen thousand and two hundred dollar. This portion for the homestead will be excluded from the market value, the property. Taxable net capa- capacity, uh, taxing or section tax will, uh, net tax capacity of all the tax capacity for all property, except the TAF, which is the tax increment financing district. And maybe this is what the city need to enter from taxes to able to provide the service that it's planned to have for the next year. Physical disparity, it's sharing property in Twin City and Iron Ranch. It's sharing the commercial property. So it's beneficial for some city like us, for big city in China, like asserting them, but, uh, for us, it's beneficial. Uh, some twenty twenty-six budget feature, uh, maintaining the current service. Use of reserve, we have one new position. Uh, the proposed twenty twenty-six, uh, general fund levies increase of seven hundred sixty thousand three hundred ninety-six. As a net general fund, uh, priority tax levy proposes an increase of eight percent, which would be consistent of last year. Uh, debt service increase for road and construction equipment by forty-one percent and sixty-eight. Uh, HRA levy would be increased one point five percent. Uh, we have only one new position, which will be for a police department. Uh, full-time assistant police chief, roughly around seventy-one dollar an hour. Uh, no significant capital request included. Uh, for the revenue, we project revenue fifteen million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred and one increase less than five percent. Six hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-nine. Local government aid, there's increase by ninety-eight hundred. Franchise fees, uh, we took the average of the last five year, so it will be four hundred sixty-five thousand. And, uh, the income generated from the franchise fees mainly is split between the general fund and the street reconstruction. Uh, for fine, we expect a hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred, kind of less than average till we be back to fully staff. Uh, permit basic on five-year average. Uh, for transfer, kind of consistent with the previous year, like two hundred transfer from capital fund, reimbursement for engineering staff time and project. Uh, fifty thousand transfer from Solid West for code enforcement and fifty thousand transfer combination of liquor and license center fund. If we look to the graph here, you will see like the city main, city revenue is taxes, which is close to sixty-one percent. Uh, the government aid was roughly around twenty percent. And the other piece can, I'm saying is between less than five percent each. For the twenty twenty-six tax levy, uh, general fund levy is nine million, six hundred and eighty-nine hundred twenty-one. We have different bond levy from two hundred seventeen up to two hu- two thousand twenty-five. The whole point was issuing bonds that we have a long time, like between ten to fifteen year. So instead of increasing skyrocket, uh, taxes for the street project stuff like cost a lot of money that we spread it over ten, fifteen year, can I make it easy on the resident of Robbinsdale? And also enjoying that we are double A plus, uh, bond rating, so we enjoy that getting a bond at low interest rate. So debt rev- uh, debt service went from two thousand seventeen, five point one million up to nine point seven. More about Asian infrastructure, water treatment plant, some measure project, insulation, those mean reason for why we're keeping, but city is able to be like good place to live. So this is intention like, uh, to maintain the city. For the local government aid, uh, we see a slightly increase, especially in the last two, three years. And back to two thousand seventeen was one point seven million, we are now two point five million, so slight bit is very helpful to the city. For the expenditure, uh, the twenty twenty-six proposed, including transfer would be sixteen million, thirty-five thousand and one hundred forty-nine, increase of five point nine two or eight hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-three, increase from twenty twenty-five. Include allowance for cost of living and other compensation adjustment, which was one of the goals that the city did for last year. Uh, Turner Service Fund, the charge had constant, uh, constant from prior year level. Uh, for capital project, uh, would be financed with capital note use of reserve already fair. When we look to the major expenditure, we have it's mainly public safety is about fifty-seven percent. And we have public work around twenty-six percent, community developing five percent, general government less than eight percent and recreation five percent. If we break it down in personnel, it's around sixty-eight percent and other charges roughly twenty-nine percent and supply is three percent. We are planning to use seven hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred fifty-six from reserve. We've been, uh, doing good for the last five, eight years that we've been able to have conservative budget. End of the year, we are able to transfer fund to support other department, even like there will be proposed use of reserve. So this is something always positive. Last year, close to two million, we were able to transfer it to other fund. We expect with the current use of reserve, uh, that we will be fifty-two pers- close to fifty-three percent, eight million, four hundred eighty-three and seven hundred twenty-nine. For the tax impact, twenty twenty-six tax levy before the physical disparity is less than twelve percent, changed from twenty twenty-five. Total physical disparity allocation decrease equal adjustment by seven, less than eighteen percent. Net spread levy impact physical disparity about twenty-nine percent. Tax levy impact over the last six year on average home, seven hundred seventy dollar and eighteen cent or an average hundred twenty-eight dollar and thirty-six cent. Uh, conclusion review proposal on fund and debt service levy and budget. Proposed Turner Service Fund charge, uh, public truth and taxation meeting to be December second. Uh, future budget and CIP. Additional information will be, as I provide to the TNT meeting and question or comments.
Uh, counsel, any questions?
I did. Um, thank you, Dia. Could you go back to slide thirteen? And that, it's all these num- like levy numbers. So are these numbers in kind of the right-hand column of this, is that the outstanding remaining on these bonds? Is that the interest we're paying on these bonds? Is this, I guess I just need better understanding of like, you know, where those, what those numbers mean.
Yeah, this is the actual levy that it will be added to each resident in his taxes as a total, like, uh, other than the general fund levies or the debt service levy. So the portion of the twenty seventeen bond will be fifty-six hundred, which will be spread all over the city. You talk about twenty-eight between the street bond and equipment, between the sixty-seven thousand or the sixty-eight. So this is the amount the debt service, so other than the general fund levies or the debt service, the city need to collect to be able to pay for the bond.
Okay, debt service in general, okay, great, thank you.
Um, I've got a question on slide fifteen. So, uh, we had heard early that local government aid was going to be a little, um, less than. And it looks like fairly consistent almost with the year before. What, Tim, I, I, what happened in twenty twenty-four that we had such a good jump? And then, like, are we leveling off to, like, keep with the trend line? Like, what's the, do you know what the backstory is on the local government aid?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor, counsel, it's a good question. So maybe those watching at home, just a, a, a quick, uh, explanation. Local government aid is the, um, it's a, uh, long, sometimes adjusted algorithm that's approved by the legislature. And every year, a certain pot of money goes into that. Um, result of that, um, it's something that has to be set and agreed upon at that state level. Um, but, uh, at a high level, there are some years where more funds are dedicated. Um, obviously some years there are less. Traditionally, it goes up, um, with some level, I would, you know, consider the last three years to your observation largely flat. Um, so while funding may potentially increase, the allocation may be a bit different. Some years, the allocation's a bit different while funding increases. Um, it's been some years, uh, like the mid-late hots, we saw a significant reduction in LGA. And then actually, it's, it's pretty detrimental to a city like ours. We're so reliant on it. Um, so really all this to say that LGA is, I don't want to say at the whim, but, uh, this is, you know, state money dedicated by the legislature. The, uh, we have no reason to believe that the formula will be significantly adjusted. It's the amount of funding that we typically keep our, our eye on from year to year. Um, we usually have a sense kind of late spring what they're suggesting, and then that goes through MMB and a couple other offices. Ultimately, we hear by about July or August what that number is, um, and then plug it into our numbers.
Is that something we can influence? Or is that like purely an algorithm that you're the victim of math?
Uh, a great question, Mister Mayor, counsel. The, again, at the legislative level, if you think in terms of our representatives, both Senator Rest and Representative Freiberg, they represent a number of different cities and every city has a different perspective on this. Um, you know, there are particulars, including things like age of housing stock. Uh, so if more, as that ties to, uh, some would argue philosophically ties to infrastructure, we've got an agent housing stock, we've got agent infrastructure. So maybe some of the philosophy there is to help us offset or address some of those costs. Now, if we were in, say, a further out suburb, a third, fourth ring suburb, where housing stock is new, they're going to say, well, that's not fair, that we have other needs, we have things to address. So, um, I, I share that out, not to speak for Senator Rest or Representative Freiberg. Uh, but it's a, it's certainly a, um, a tricky issue to advocate for, because when you, you add up the eight hundred and fifty-five cities in the, the state, there are some that get zero. Um, so, uh, we're certainly appreciative for what we get, but we'll continue to advocate that, uh, funding stays strong.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Dia. Um, I wanted to ask specifically on the overview item with the debt service levy, um, the increase for road construction and other equipment purchases of, uh, over forty-one percent. And yes, thank you, read my mind on this slide. Um, for the perhaps residents who are looking at this chart and notice that, uh, somewhat significant jump in the debt service for twenty twenty-six, um, understanding that's tied to, um, some of those construction projects and larger, uh, purchases. Could you talk a little bit about what specifically that larger jump will be paying for in twenty twenty-six? So, so that residents can put, uh, sort of a vision to, um, what that increase will be, uh, the purpose for that?
Yeah, mainly like, uh, as a part of process of the CIP is that we will, it will be even happening after we're done of this. City engineer, the city manager, finance director, other department get through what equipment they need, what need to get replaced, street project, how urgent it is. Then we. project, how urgent it is, then we kind of netting till the city council decide which one can go to the next year, which is more important. For the twenty twenty-five, initially, like we were about to have a bond of six million, but there was opportunity of good saving for the fire equipment that it will be available by twenty twenty-nine, if I'm not mistaken, yes. It costs around two point eight million. So there was a good saving. If we can add it to this bond, that we can save more than three hundred thousand with a push now in the market that interest rate will go down starting very soon. This is very expected with the next central bank meeting, keep going. So interest rate will be going down. So if we have such a saving, if we keep this money the four years, what we will generate would be much more than three hundred. So it was more about analysis, should we put it? We had meeting with the city attorneys, the bond committee, first, did this qualify to add it to the project for the twenty twenty-five, especially we added in kind of last minute. If it possible, yes, we confirm with our advisor, bond advisor, have a meeting with the city manager to go through the terms, we refer it. So kind of stuff like some stuff is more expensive. It used to be like two million, few years back, one point five even for stuff like getting too expensive. Street project also, there's kind of hard to control how much will be ending. I think one of the street project recently was more than four hundred thousands and estimated in the beginning, which is something make it harder. I recall like when we had Water Tower Two, Water Tower One, were assume it will be four million dollar, it ended up six point five million. So some stuff like it's city stuff trying to find the best value, but sometime it's hard and it depends for trend, do we need to keep Asian infrastructure and take the consequence of the risk or shall we maintain it and try to look what's the top priority or something affect the city performance? And the city council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Council, Councilmember Parision, if I can just follow up real quickly, Mr. Toon, that's a very good summary certainly of the process and how we got to. I just pulled up the narrative, maybe for those watching at home, I think yes, specifically to this year's issuance, a little over eight and a half million. As noted, a big chunk of that went towards the new ladder truck, operational twenty twenty-nine. Beyond that, construction of capital improvement to the public works facility, so a lot of planning designated toward that's process, some street reconstruction projects, infrastructure improvement at Sandborne, thinking specifically about stormwater, some acquisition, think rolling stock, general capital, day-to-day vehicles, some property acquisition again for Water Tower Two, that was noted. And again, these are a ten-year term payback.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Greenberg.
On slide eighteen. So understanding that our largest expenditure is personnel, which has been pretty consistent. I'm curious if you can speak to, you know, supplies is a little bit of a sliver, but the other charges and services is a relatively large bucket and I'm wondering what falls into, like, can we speak to any detail and like what other charges and services would be?
Mr. Mayor Council, if I may, Councilmember Greenberg, other charges and services, general fund expenditures, thinking in terms of where I sometimes phrase it up to folks, you kind of got your operational and your capital, so operational, things that we put into our year-to-year budget. You have as a part of the actual action item under new business, a drawn-out, it's that, I forget, thirteen, fourteen-page document. It's very much a summary, but that draws that all line by line. So that other twenty-eight point six percent, that's largely for all those things. So again, personnel, you know, not just salaries, that includes insurance and those other things to maintain staff, but this is kind of everything else operationally.
Got it, thank you. If I may, I'm expecting answer at this moment, but we talked a little bit about this and this was the addition of the full-time assistant police chief at seventy-one an hour, which is about a hundred and forty thousand a year, give or take, and then that's, they get hourly, so there's overtime that's paid, correct? Or is it a salary?
No overtime for this.
No overtime, seventy-one an hour, okay. It would be good to know, and I don't dispute it, I would just like to know more about it in maybe another time, but like what doesn't happen if that person doesn't get hired, right? Or what's not happening now that requires that individual to be hired? So I know we're adding officers, right? I think what, five more? And so obviously as staff expands, responsibilities expand and, you know, typical management ratio is, good ratio is seven to one, but, you know, I just, I'd be curious to know like how the work kind of breaks down and what happens if it doesn't exist, so. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor Council, I know you said you weren't expecting a response. I can give you a high-level response, certainly a great conversation for a future work session. What I've shared out with some folks related to PD is you mentioned, you know, we're very appreciative of council having supported the cadet program. You know, Councilmember Parision and Councilmember Wagner were a part of those early on discussions a few years ago and to start to see the fruit of that is fantastic. So some now just coming into the FTO portion of that, years in the making. With that, for good reason, we see at the leadership level, you know, increased demand. I say good reason, we're held to certain accountabilities, whether it's outside organizations like the BCA or maybe at a federal level, additional reporting, we're required to train up in more things tech-related. So there's just continued demand, there's continued resources required, a lot of it falls on personnel. So, I mean, we can certainly put together a summary of things that we kicked to the side that I would have loved to done two years ago, to paint up a little bit more where we see this leadership role coming in. I think it's a good question about ratio and certainly more directly what duties those might look like. But again, at a high level is from the newest, you know, CSO all the way up to the chief, there are more things being asked of our public safety officials. And again, for good reason, we're answering more, we're being, doing more reporting, responding to those agencies that hold us to a high standard, which we do as well. But to do that properly, to do all those audits, to go through all those things, that just takes time and time needs people.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Make a comment. I really appreciate all the work that went into this presentation and the information that you're sharing with us and I just want to make sure that this, I think I can, the rest of the council would agree with this, that we're asking questions because we're thinking of residents and the expense that goes into paying higher taxes to pay for the levy and so we're, we're not necessarily pushing back on the data that you're giving us, we're making sure we have all of our details together and so that we can inform and that the, the public is informed as we go through this process.
Thanks, Dia. Okay. There's nothing else. Moving through public hearings and old business because there's nothing there, on to new business, the proposed twenty twenty-six general fund and debt service property tax levies.
Yeah, as we mentioned, the proposed twenty twenty-six was presented and discussed at the budget work session in August nineteen. In twenty twenty levy limit are not in effect, the city will receive an increase of local government aid in amount two thousand, two million five hundred forty-nine, eight hundred fourteen, basically from adopted by legislature. The former is basically number of job in the city per capita, the age of housing stock and average city tax. Physical disparity, there's an increase of allocation of three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and four. Final levy will be adopted in December, which can be reduced but cannot be increased above this proposed levy. We have approximate general fund use, seven hundred and twelve thousand four hundred fifty-six of the general fund reserve. And there's a lot of report during the calculation for this one and the resolution by the end for the proposed twenty twenty-six general fund and debt service tax levy.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Mr. Mayor Council, thank you. As you're mulling over the action item here, as Mr. Toon had just presented to you and now for again formal action, I do want to offer up my thanks to council for those maybe watching at home. This is a conversation that we really started at the beginning of the year. We've got a new mayor, two new council members, really a brand-new group and they go through an exercise, we call it the top goals and priorities and from that maybe not explicit direction by way of spending, but it really sets the tone for the year. Starting in May through work sessions, certain special or otherwise meetings, council hosts these types of discussions. It's been very good council to work with, I know their support of staff, but do want to note to Councilmember Greenberg's comment just a moment ago, these are not decisions that are taken lightly. I often frame up not just the most difficult decision, the most set of, or the most difficult set of decisions rather, that council has to make, certainly balancing the high level of service that's expected with the recognizing what the tax burden may, may have on individual residents and businesses here in the community, again, is not taken lightly. So I say that by way of offering my thanks to council as you consider if we do have further questions, as it's been another good year. Do want to finally note that this is a preliminary, not to exceed. I know council has expressed interest in, as we traditionally do, some additional conversation between now and December, that truth and taxation is the first week in December, so we do have a bit of time, goes by quick, but we do have a bit of time to do some refining as the group finds appropriate. So again, I offer my thanks.
Got any, any questions here? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you. That's all good. Yes, I want to echo that thanks, Tim, so I appreciate your efforts on this and the finance team's efforts as well and the council too for, for having this difficult discussion. One thing I just want to like make, I guess I need clarification, so in the memo, it says option four, in exhibit four, but I think in the, I think in the attachment, it's actually option three, but I also, my memory is a little foggy and it could be wrong, so I just was wondering which, which one we landed on.
It's option three, maybe it's just.
Option three?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Council, Councilmember Wagner, that's an excellent catch, that is option three, you'll note that that number is what correlates with the resolution.
Great, okay, perfect. I guess just, oh, no, go ahead.
I just want to add like, as a new council member as well too, like the amount of work and time and deep conversations we've had around this has been really insightful for me as well too, so I do want to say we don't take this lightly and I do appreciate the amount of work and the questions and just the intentionality around like answering all of the wild questions that may come up as well too. So I do want to say that this is a formal like, yeah, thank you and appreciation for this, for the level of work put into being mindful of how we support our neighbors and ourselves.
And yeah, I suppose just to add for that, if that's, if I could, Mayor. Thank you. So this is the, yeah, proposed number and we're still like working with staff, staff still working on, on getting the final percentage, but this sets the ceiling, so it can't go above the amount we're proposing and I think, well, yeah, I mean, I certainly would like to see this come down more as we kind of had talked about in the, in the workshop session with staff. So there's that balance that up here, we're trying to, you know, advocate for, you know, for city services and these different programs that we want to implement, but also keeping the city affordable and not just kind of needlessly raising the levy. And so that's kind of what I think we're tasked to do with up here and then staff has the difficult task of kind of seeing that vision come into fruition by taking what we're giving them and making sure that they can still provide a high level of service and implement new programs and all of those things that we're asking of them, but keep the levy at a reasonable degree because as we know, everything is just increasing in cost, increasing in cost. And so I just wanted to add that context for people that maybe are tuning in or not necessarily familiar with the, what, what we're doing tonight. So yeah, we're just setting something preliminarily, but it's a to-not-exceed number and hopefully it'll come down. But that's, December is the meeting where we decide that, so a few months left to kind of work out the details on the final number.
Thank you for the commentary. Councilmember Wagner?
Yes. So I, thank you for pointing out the to-not-exceed detail because it's really important and it is, the eight percent is what you'll see on all the documentation, but that does not necessarily mean that's like the number we cannot exceed, so thanks for explaining that. I think just some of the things that I want to put out there that I'm thinking about that if, you know, if there are residents out there that are having, like have questions or want to agree with what I'm saying or want to clarify what I'm thinking, I just wanted to put it out there, just, it's a little bit separate than asking a specific question about the budget, but just how we think in context of a lot of the numbers we see relative to neighboring cities, the percentages and things. And I think it's important to think about while, yeah, the, maybe the, the tax capacity percentage might be similar and we fall in the ballpark of our neighboring cities, it's helpful to understand the differences there because we don't have as large of a commercial district as some of our neighboring cities do. We don't really have much for an industrial, we don't have a large industrial base of, of companies separately from commercial. So just knowing, you know, the, the breakdown between commercial and residential as it relates to our other cities and the tax capacity that they're, that they're being, that, that they're showing, or tax capacity percentage. And just like, another thing that I'm thinking about is putting this in context of, it's not just Robinsdale's levy, there's also Hennepin County and the school district and so understanding, I know we need to do what's best for Robinsdale, but residents pay the full amount, not just the portion that we're speaking to, so being cognizant of that and thinking about that. Also, something that I hear a lot about is just, I don't get a ton of feedback on the tax levy, there are definitely people that have given me, you know, feedback on it, but what I do hear a lot about is utilities and I know that that's a separate conversation, but I do think as we go through these conversations, it's important to understand what are the utility increases or what, if there are any, and what does that look like for residents? Because, well, it's not part of the budget, conversation specifically in the tax levy, it is overall expense that residents pay to the city, so wanted to throw that out there as well. And so those, it's, you know, I don't expect to have answers right now, I'm saying as we go through these conversations, which we will be having through the month of October and November, those are some of the things that I'm looking to like frame it up and be able to explain to people who come to me, residents that come to me and my constituents, I want to be able to, I want to be thinking about that and I want to be able to explain those pieces.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenberg. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, counsel, for those comments earlier. Very well said, I don't have much more to add other than I want to acknowledge that these decisions are some of the most important decisions that a council can make in a given year. So with that being said, lots of work and preparation done by staff, just discussions with the council, just want to share my appreciation for those efforts and for the really engaged discussions that the council has had and will continue to have up until December. So with all that being said, again, it's a very. So with all that being said, again, it's a very important decision and one that is not taken lightly. So appreciate all the sentiments that have already been shared.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. Well, is there a motion to waive the reading and order the adoption of the resolution setting the proposed 2026 general fund and debt service property tax levies and certifying to Hennepin County as shown in exhibit four? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? All right. It's approved. Moving on, we now have the proposed 2026 HRA property tax levy.
So similar to the general fund, the city is required to submit a proposed 2026 tax levy to Hennepin County by end of September. The levy will be used by the Hennepin to prepare the truth and taxation notice that the county would mail to resident in November. This levy for a readout to use for continuing community devolving effort, which the city had a lot of successful project using the limited fund. Like the levy is less than two percent increase of last year, so it's going in 2025, we had 334,832. It will go to 339,881, basic on the market value, which is the maximum, and city always try to get the maximum. So improve the opportunity for business and growing activity.
Thank you, dear. Counsel, any questions or comments? Is there a motion to, yes, Tim? All right. Going once, going twice? All right. Is there a motion to waive the reading and order the adoption of the resolution setting the proposed 2026 housing and redevelopment authority HRA property tax levy as shown in exhibit one?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no or nay? All right. Moved. Next on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance amending sections of the Robinsdale City Code related to electric vehicle charging stations and solar energy systems.
Great. I love when the technology works. Good evening. My name is Kayla Kurtz. I am the sustainability coordinator for the city of Robinsdale. Here to more formally present to you tonight, the draft ordinance we had discussed at last week's work session, which is a ordinance proposing some electric vehicle charging station and solar energy system language to be added to our city code. And I'm just gonna walk you through some of the important details from the ordinance, as well as talk a little bit about how we got to said ordinance. So I want to start by acknowledging the fact that the city council, for a few consecutive years now, across different councils, has been formerly, formerly designating sustainability efforts as a top goal and priority. So more specifically, this council, this year in 2025, you know, formally agreed to pursue projects related to environmental sustainability, such as green building standards for city facilities, public EV charger installation, achieving green step five, continuing public education efforts, and exploring energy efficiency programs for businesses. So I just wanted to call that out as a kind of a reminder and a sort of the high level force that's driving a lot of the work that kind of went into drafting this ordinance and why we want to see it through as staff. The city also participates in two programs, Soul Smart and Charging Smart. They are national programs that provide technical assistance to local governments across the nation with the intent of helping to expand electric vehicle and solar energy growth at a local scale. And that technical assistance is really valuable, especially for smaller communities like us, who don't have as much, you know, time or staffing or resources or money as, you know, like the big metropolitans of the world, Minneapolis's, the St. Louis parks, things like that. The technical assistance here is really valuable in, in, you know, us being able to tactically implement these kinds of projects. So with that, as part of our involvement in these programs, something that they often, or that they prompt us to do very early on is review our zoning code in the event that there's language in the code that might restrict or inhibit the deployment of solar or EVs, or it enables us to identify that there actually isn't any language in the code that would neither advance or inhibit somebody putting solar on their roof or installing a charging station at their business. So in doing this review of our zoning code, we found that there's currently no language in there related to electric vehicles or electric vehicle, vehicle charging stations. So that gave us, gave us a pretty good blank slate to start from. And in terms of solar energy, there were, there were a few, there's some existing language in there, thanks to former, former staff implementing this, that essentially allowing solar systems in residential districts, both roof mounted and ground mounted. So, but this was, this is important as we think about the draft ordinance, because what's in our zoning code can be restrictive, but it can also help to enable solar and EV deployment in Robinsdale. And my job as the sustainability coordinator is to ideally, you know, support more and more solar and EVs in our community. This is also something that communities, a lot of our neighbors, like I said, the participating communities in Soul Smart and Charging Smart across the nation are already working to adopt these kinds of ordinances and/or have already adopted them for years. So this work is just, would also help to kind of get us in line with where our neighbors are already at. And it's also in an attempt to anticipate this growing industry. We know that more and more folks are putting solar on their roofs, and more and more businesses are looking to install EV charging stations, or multifamily complexes are adding them for their residents. So we want to make sure that our zoning code reflects what's going on in Robinsdale. And finally, this language also just sets these clear standards for, for those looking to install. And, you know, ideally, with that language can help save them time and money on the forefront, rather than the back end when, if, if, if this language didn't exist in our code. So I'll walk through the main components of the ordinance. There's the electric vehicle side of things and the solar side of things. They are, you know, separate elements, but they're just in the same document for ease. So the first main component of the electric vehicle language that I want to call out is the EV insulation requirements that we are proposing. So again, like I mentioned, this is very, very similar to what our neighbors are, what our neighbors are doing. I called out a few examples in your memo from Golden Valley, St. Louis Park, and Roseville. So I would encourage you to compare what's in that memo to the table on the slide, which I also included in the memo. But we're essentially proposing that larger, when a new large development, mixed use development, or a, a new like Hy-Vee, for example, would come into town, that with their parking requirements, we would also require them to install a minimum number of EV charging stations. So this is looking at properties with parking lots, 50 spaces or larger. So if you think about our developments and properties in Robinsdale right now, there aren't very many with parking lots that large. So this applies to a smaller set in the, in the community. But also note that anything, you know, less than 50 spaces, this would not apply to. Slightly different requirements for multifamily properties versus non-residential properties. And then there's also a clause to kind of address any, our existing lots who might undergo large renovations or large reconstructions to enable them to then install those EV stations at that time. When they're already undergoing construction, it's much more feasible and less costly to install the conduit and electrical and things at that point, rather than if the lot is, you know, already constructed and they got to dig up, you know, a bunch of concrete and things like that. I want to highlight this line at the top, all new parking areas and existing parking areas expanding by more than 25% additional parking spaces, and existing parking areas improving by more than 25% of the parking area are subject to these requirements. When staff and I were discussing this line item, we kind of had a moment of, you know, what does that mean exactly, improving by 25%? And so this brings me to another clause in the ordinance that if the, if the cost of installing the chargers and the construction and things exceeds 5% of the total project cost, the developer, the property owner can then apply for, or come to the council and ask for a reduction in those requirements. So we're kind of using that 5% of the project cost to define the 25% of parking area improvement. Moving on to the, the next sort of main section in the EV ordinance, these are just some of the, you know, basic, basic pieces of language that we're looking to incorporate. So essentially, the ordinance would allow EV charging stations in every zoning district as an accessory use. EV charging station parking spaces would count towards minimum parking requirements. New gas stations would be required to install an EV charging station. Again, we don't really get many of those in Robinsdale, but you never know. And then items four and five on the slide I just mentioned. Developers and property owners can always come to the council and request reductions based on their project circumstances. So next, looking at just the basic requirements that we've incorporated for, we're not necess, yeah, requirements for our smaller residential properties. We just want the EV station to be properly placed, either in the garage or on the exterior wall of the home. And then we are also looking to require new construction of single family homes, just to have the electric capacity to support future EV station installation. Again, because the, it's much less costly to put in that wiring or conduit and paneling during construction rather than after the fact. And then finally, these are some of the requirements in the ordinance for the larger multifamily and commercial property EV chargers. The accessibility definition is laid out in the ordinance, but there's, for every property, there will be a minimum number of accessible EV stations, at least one. You know, we want those stations to be safe and visible from streets or, you know, other areas of the parking lot. We don't want people kind of meandering all around, like trying to find their charging station, especially if they're traveling in from out of town and aren't familiar with Robinsdale. The, we ask that businesses keep them operational during their normal business hours. And this was something that we had discussed with our, with the planning commission in length, because a commissioner voiced a concern of, well, if, you know, should we require that businesses operate them 24/7 so that folks coming in, you know, maybe driving through town at 2:00 AM on a road trip or something, and they desperately need a charge, they come into town and they can't find a charging station that's operable, that could, you know, that's inhibiting. And that was a very, really valuable concern, and we had discussions at length about it with our police department and our community development department and, you know, experts at Charging Smart. And ultimately, we were advised that it's best to start with a requirement of keeping them operational during business hours and ultimately leaving that decision up to the business and the property owner itself about whether or not they operate their stations beyond business hours. It also kind of put like an undue burden on the city to monitor and, you know, make, make sure that businesses are in compliance with that if, if we were to require them 24/7. And then it also removes some safety concerns, too, if, if stations aren't being fully maintained 24/7. Stations are required to be properly lit and compliant with all the necessary codes. And business, the charging station owner can also collect a fee for operating that station. You know, you, similarly, when you pay for gas, you also can pay to charge, and the charging station owner will set that fee themselves, so they can accrue that revenue. And then I do want to call out number nine as well, because this was a topic of discussion that came out of the work session regarding maintenance of these stations and ensuring proper maintenance of them. So this was in the language, I just failed to call it out at the work session. But in the, in the document, subsection I, line item six, we have, "EV charging stations shall be maintained in all respects, including the functioning of the equipment. A phone number or other contact information shall be provided on the equipment for reporting problems with the equipment or access to it." And then this also sets the precedent that staff can go out and cite businesses or properties if they are not properly maintaining and operating their stations. So those are the main kind of details of the EV ordinance. And now I will just briefly run through the solar language. So like I said, we had some solar language in the code already, essentially permitting solar systems in our residential districts. So folks didn't need to apply for a conditional use permit in order to get that, which was great. So we just are hoping to add then height setback and visibility standards. We are also proposing specifying that roof mounted solar systems are a permitted accessory use on our public facilities, as well as the commercial districts. And then that ground mounted systems are a conditional use in those districts. Also adding the height setback and visibility standards, which is typical, or just best practice for the code. And then we also are suggesting adding ground mounted systems as a permitted use in the business warehouse district in the event that an empty lot became available and someone wanted to install a ground mounted array in that space. Granted, we don't have, that scenario isn't hot, super likely, but we have that language in there in the event that it came up. So I'll wrap up by just talking about the fact that what you see before you was initially presented to the planning commission in July at the July seventeenth meeting. They held a public hearing, which was properly posted in the papers and the necessary avenues. We did not receive any public comment at that public hearing, but we had a very robust discussion with the planning commission. And what I alluded to earlier, the commissioners were a little bit concerned about business operational hours, rightfully so. And then they also had some questions about kind of future-proofing the language in regards to charging technology because the different types of EV chargers, that technology is evolving and growing and they wanted to ensure that we didn't unintentionally kind of inhibit ourselves by not calling out specific types of chargers. So we modified the language a little bit just to, or we, I guess we simplified the type of charging station language to be a bit more flexible as charging station technology evolves from here into the future. So we brought that language back to the planning commission in August and they unanimously voted to recommend council's approval of the ordinance. We brought it to you all last week at the work session. And really the goal of this, of this ordinance is to ensure that there's basic standards and definitions in our city code regarding EV stations and solar energy systems. We're also proposing some modest, you know, charging station requirements that can always be scaled up or scaled down, ideally scaled up in the future, you know, as the market and as our, as our community evolves. And staff, of course, too, will remain up to date on solar and EV charging stations, especially with our involvement in these programs. And, you know, that's also the beauty of the position of the sustainability coordinator. That position can and will be expected to, you know, remain up to date on best practices. And so this ordinance is something that we as staff expect to update and, and evolve as the industries evolve. So I will answer any questions that you have about the language. And ideally, you'll hold a first reading tonight of the draft language in front of you.
I, I missed the part in, in that ordinance about the types because there's the Tesla and then there's the rest of the world, right? I mean, that's how it goes, I believe. Now that I own an EV, I've noticed that. So do we specify in there, how many gotta be Tesla, how many gotta be regular? No?
Well, yes. In the, in the, in the table with the required number of stations, we do say, you know, may go back.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't looking, I was listening.
You know, and the multiple, multi-unit residential, ten percent of those must be level one or greater. When I mentioned the different types of chargers a little bit ago, I was referencing like level one, level two, and direct current fast charging. Not specifically like Tesla chargers and charge point and.
Blank.
Blank, right. So that was more so in regards to the definition section. We had initially stated level one, level two, and level three. A planning commissioner asked us, what about level four chargers? Those are coming onto the market. So rather than calling out level three specifically, we modified that language to direct current fast charging, which, you know, level three and level four and whatever comes after level three fall under the umbrella of fast charging. So that's what I was referencing there. If that answers your question.
It does, but I wonder then if I'm a developer, like, do we want to say, well, you know, so much of the market is Tesla, so much of the market is not, right? Because then what if, because I think the whole concern might be like, well, what if the developer doesn't put in EV? Well, what if the developer doesn't put in the EVs that I use?
I do know that the charging industry is all starting to shift towards like one specific type of plug. I think right now there are two different plug types, like Tesla has its own and, which might be different from, you know, like our charge point one out here. And I've been told by the folks in the industry that they're moving towards all having the same charging plug.
Well, I'm still not a huge fan of this council because, and I've talked to four different developers about this, all of whom have said, yeah, we put EV in anyway. And I want to be the city that like developers feel like we're easy to work with, not more difficult. And I feel like we're mandating something that the, well, something, let me be clear, that the market is doing anyway. And to upkeep that, we've got to take council time to review people who request to do less. We've got to take staff time to check off the box to make sure that they put the EV stations in and then go make sure that they're maintained and then review like citations. Like, it's all of this work that we're doing for something that's happening anyway. It's just, it's like saying, we're going to make sure that houses are built with roofs and windows. Like, it's going to happen anyway. And so I don't know, like, I like the solar part of this. I just don't love the EV part because it's going to cost us money. It's gonna, it's gonna cost the developer money and that will get passed on to the renter or whoever takes, you know, takes possession of the home. I just think it's something we don't need to do. I like it. Like I said, I'm an EV owner. It's becoming more convenient. I mean, we're putting an EV installation in our garage next week. So it's like, like this stuff is happening organically and I just, I feel like this is government reaching too far into mandating something happens that's just happening. Like, why make this a rule when people are doing, like, we're not all of a sudden going to be like, oh, you know what, we're not going to do EVs anymore. Like, I don't know a developer that would like want to put out a multi-unit housing like thing and not want to attract EV customers. I don't even know if it's happened. Do we have examples where it's happened, you know? Like, four developers, which is sample size of four, have all said to me, yeah, no, we do that anyways. We want to do that. So that's my point of view. And I will leave it for the rest of the council to have their comments. Councilmember Greenberg?
I think it's a valid point and a, and a, an idea that I take seriously as far as, like, you know, do we need to do this? Is it overreach from a government standpoint? And I guess I'm thinking, if they're doing it anyway, it behooves the city to have some framework around what they're doing. So I, I just feel like there's a lot of flexibility. Two things that jump out at me is that I think specifically to the EVPs, that we're taking a very measured approach into this, that it's just setting up some framework that's in place that has really very minimal requirements. That if you're talking to developers that are going to do this, they're going to clear the threshold anyway. So I don't even know that they're going to need to, like, I mean, they're coming to us with all kinds of requests and conditional use requests. And so those, there will be a lot of conversations that are happening between the city and a developer. And I do agree, like, we want more development. We want developers to feel welcome and to feel like it's easy to work with Robinsdale. But I don't think this is where we're going to run into a roadblock. And I think like the work that we've done, that I've heard about is like in past developments that like, Robinsdale does make it easy to work with developers and we're super open to development. So I don't think this sends the signal that we're against it, especially considering that they're doing it anyway. It gives us a framework that's very reasonable, reasonable. And then the other thing that I'll say is that there is, there's flexibility built into it. So it's not as that, we're not trying to burden developers. We're just trying to have some set of standards that seem to me just very reasonable. And I'll say kind of what I said in our last meeting, which is, as we go through projects and we have discussions, there's not a, I mean, like, we set up the rules and if developers follow the rules, then like we don't really have a lot of input. So like, they are, when they have requests, we want to be able to say like, well, here's the rule, you're asking for this concession, we'll, you know, it's like it gives you something to have a discussion over and some, you know, without it, it might happen anyway. It sounds like it would. But I like that we have, we have a framework that, it just doesn't feel like overreach. It just seems like, here's some bare minimum stuff that like anyone that would be doing it anyway is going to meet those requirements. And that gives us some, some ability to negotiate as well. That's my take. And the solar thing, I think we're all on the same page.
Anything else?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kayla. I continue to be supportive of this policy and for ones, two specific examples, actually. The two pieces of feedback that I brought to the proposed language in our work session were related to the maintenance upkeep, which has been addressed and I'm really happy to see that. I think from a policymaker standpoint, that alone is a really key piece in order to protect the high level of services that we ask our developers to offer in Robinsdale. And it protects our residents too of having charging points that are functional. And then the other piece of feedback that I brought was related to the ongoing upkeep and revisiting this language over time. And you've addressed that as, you know, as part of your role and how you're committing to coming back to this with advancing technology. So I appreciate that, or you addressing that piece of feedback as well. I don't have much else to add other than thanks again for your work on this and I will happily support the updated language.
Would this be retroactive to like Hy-Vee who's got charging stations? So will they have to maintain if this ordinance, like, they don't get grandfathered in, obviously, right? So they, they would have to fix a broken, by a certain period of time?
Yes, I, I, yes, thank you, Mayor. I believe the, yes, the like maintenance requirements would apply to existing stations.
Councilmember Wagner?
This is pointed, the city manager.
Oh, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. I just want to reiterate to Ms. Currie's comment, any agreement, what the council went through for the Hy-Vee development included a very specific list of agreements. So if you're looking for a specific language, including to main, including to maintenance or otherwise, we'd be happy to dig that up for you.
Cool.
Thank you, Tim.
Sure. There's two of us. Yeah, I guess I think even our work session, like, so we had, we had a conversation around some of the updates and changes that I think Councilmember Prevision alluded to. And I guess I think it is nice to have standards that we have. So I appreciate having that level and it does seem very flexible as far as how it shows up within the document as well too. So I do appreciate that sentiment. So yeah, I'll be, I'll be happy to support this as well too, looking for it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think people kind of spoke to it better than I can, but I'll just kind of publicly voice my support for this as well. I appreciate everybody's comments and feedbacks and, yeah, happy to, to support this. Thank you for doing this work. I know it's a lot, a lot of back and forth between different departments, between, you know, legal, I'd imagine, and talking to the community. Thank you for taking the planning commission's feedback seriously and addressing all their concerns. They're kind of, in many, many times, I feel like I've deferred to their expertise when we get stuff from them. And so hearing that, you know, they put you through the wringer a little bit and then got you to improve it and come back with something that was, yeah, improved. So just I commend, commend that. And I want to thank the planning commission too for spending so much intentional time on this and, yeah, for all those extra reasons, I'm, yeah, ready to support this, so.
Yep. If I may, I'll just reiterate what you said, Councilwoman Wagner. The planning commission, we had, we had two really robust discussions about the language and they were very engaged and had a lot of really, really great questions about the language. And so, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that again and acknowledge that they did put me through the wringer a little bit with it. As you said, you said it, not me. So, yeah, the, the meetings with the planning commission were very productive and, but also they were very supportive. But more importantly, they, they asked a lot of really great questions and, which led to, you know, even more research and better understanding of the language that we're proposing tonight.
Great, thank you.
Well, I can see where this is going, so. And by the way, I do realize it's a lot of work that goes into this and thank you for doing that. And I, and with the respect to planning commission as well, I do appreciate the hard work that they've, they've put in. I just, I don't agree with it. But luckily, it's not my decision. So is there a motion to hold the first reading of the ordinance amending sections 505, 510, 515, 517, 520, and 520, 20, 525 of the Robinsdale city code?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, nay. That passes. All right. Thank you. Moving on to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot. All right, moving on to other business, voucher requests pending approval for dispersment. We're good. Any questions anybody has there? All right, pay the bills, got it? All right.
Make a motion.
Yeah, you want to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the dispersment request for the period ending September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay? All right, that passes. Next, enterprise funds budget, capital project funds budget, and CIP planning work sessions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So tis the season, all things budget. As we get into this time of year, we like to dedicate some time specific to the CIP as a reminder, you'll approve this at your first meeting in December. But for both staff and council's sake, we want everybody on the same page so we can discuss ahead of time. We as staff would recommend probably late October or early November, in part, you know, this time of year goes quick, but do want to make sure that we can find a time that everybody would be present. Those dates, the twelfth and eighteenth of November, really want to reserve those if we need as an additional follow-up. So depending on availability, what we might recommend is a six PM prior to your regular, regularly scheduled, excuse me, seven PM meetings, either the twenty-first of October or fourth of November for the work session as described.
I'm available the twenty-first and the fourth.
I'm available the 21st and the 4th.
I'm available on the 21st. I think we should set it earlier in case we need to have further discussions, like more. I mean, I wanna give staff time, but I also feel like, excuse me, um, giving ourselves more of a window in November is not a bad idea if we can all make it on the 21st.
Well said.
Okay. Support of the 21st?
I'm available the 21st.
Yeah, same.
All right. Feel good?
I entertain a motion and a second, uh, with a, a vote by council for 6:00 PM, 21st of October for a special work session.
I'll make a motion to hold a, uh, special work session prior to the city council meeting on October 21st at 6:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no or nay. See you on the 21st. Okay.
Oh, Mayor, do we need another one or just the one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Wagner, I, I think, uh, we're comfortable if we set the 21st. If we walk out of there, uh, recognizing, uh, we can certainly amend on the fly the regular meeting on the 21st or on the 4th. Uh, but again, having the 12th and 18th as reserved keeps us in good shape.
Cool. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, administrative reports?
Uh, nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'll be brief. Uh, wanna start with, uh, a note that I shared earlier. Do again, wanna share my thanks with council, uh, getting through the preliminary, not to exceed budget, it takes a lot of work. Um, I know a number of items, variations, conversations have been happening over the last several months. So, uh, certainly not, uh, a decision that anyone up here takes lightly. We appreciate the candid conversation. Uh, sometimes difficult, sometimes over treats, which is nice at work sessions, but, um, to get to the, to get to this point is a big hurdle. So again, I offer my thanks and, uh, congratulate the council for getting this far. Certainly work to be done, uh, but thank you for that. Uh, also wanna share a, uh, quick thanks. I know a lot of council was up there, uh, meet and greet last night. Fantastic event, great turnout, uh, got a chat with a number of folks, uh, always fun to see that kind of a get-together. Uh, and talking to some of the business owners, I know there's excitement to kind of keep that going. Um, different variations, certainly that's a, a mainstay annually with the Chamber of Commerce. So we thank them for their leadership on that, but, uh, as the city looks to, uh, get involved and work with other organizations or group that, uh, might wanna celebrate our fantastic downtown and, uh, do some of the activities that we saw there last night, uh, we're eager to do so as well. So thanks to all that came out for, for that and, um, again, to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks, Tim. Uh, general, uh, council general communications. Somebody have something they'd like to say? Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks, Council, for a good discussion tonight. I, uh, simply want to, um, echo what Tim had shared about the meet and greet last night. It was a really great event. It was nice to see, um, such a great presence from, um, those who work with the city, involved with the city, um, friendly neighbors, uh, so it was a really great event and just thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing it and thanks to all who volunteered their time to, uh, sit at tables and engage with residents. It was a great turnout, quite warm, but nice once the sun went down. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Excellent. Okay. Anybody else? I mean, you don't have to.
No, I, I definitely want to. You just don't wanna step on anyone else's toes. No, thank you. Um, yeah, it was great to see everybody out at the meet and greet last night. It was a great event. Thanks to staff and all the businesses and residents and anyone who showed up. It was, uh, it was a great time. Um, and I'm, and I apologize I had to leave a little early, but, um, what was I actually gonna say? Now I hear a blank on what I was gonna say next. I had something else. Um, oh, and I wanted to thank the resident, the people that came out to speak tonight in our open comment period. So I know it's before we're on the cameras, but, um, I just wanna make sure everybody knows, like, anytime you want to present something that isn't on the agenda, the meetings start at 7:00 PM. It's on the, uh, first and third Tuesday of every month, for the most part. And, um, there was a lot of, of, uh, feedback shared tonight and we really appreciate that. Uh, and then the last thing that I'll say is just given the climate that's going on right now, where temperatures are running very high, I think it, you know, the more we can interact as neighbors and as a community to help one another bring the temperature down, interacting as people and face-to-face is a much different thing and is the real world as opposed to what happens online. So the more you can meet your neighbors, I know, um, Councilmember Blackledge references this a lot, but I think it's really important right now, especially just knowing how, um, heated everything has become. Talking face-to-face with your neighbors and, and taking part in our community, um, help one another bring those temperatures down.
Thanks. Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Councilmember Blackledge?
Yeah, I just echo the sentiments of the fellow council members as well. Um, thank you for the meet and greet. It was phenomenal. It's fun, um, to engage and to be present with all the different community members and its businesses. Um, and, yeah, I can't say any better as well to just continue to say hi to your neighbors and as we transition into this fall weather.
Awesome. Yes, sir. Councilmember Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Council. Those are very, um, well-received, um, sentiments and I share them. Uh, just, I guess, a little bit of business. Tim, if you could keep me in the loop about the alleyway mirror conversation that occurred earlier today, that would be much appreciated. And then I think there was also a question that I probably can find out on my own, but I'll just put it out there into the world too about the organics bin and yard waste, uh, question. I don't, I don't know if you know that offhand right now. If you can speak to it, otherwise we can, um, just get an update on that later.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Wagner, you're asking what's acceptable?
Yeah, the organics, yep.
Yeah, so I, I guess, uh, for those who be watching at home, because we don't typically televise the start, uh, there was a question, uh, about some yard waste collection and was advised at the meet and greet, another good reason to attend. Um, just a quick reference, uh, what I'm pulling up now to refresh my memory, we keep a nice handy-dandy, uh, reference guide on our site. Uh, what's accepted includes food, fruits, vegetables, meat, bones, dairy products, eggshells, pasta, bread, and nuts. I think that's, uh, where that one fell under. Food, soil, paper, certified compostable products, uh, and there are some other, um, compostable household items. So a little bit of creativity there, but, uh, certainly celebrate that.
Great. Well, thank you for going through that and I, I appreciate that information. And, yeah, I guess just echo the other sentiment about the residents coming out today and speaking. It's, it's great. I'm glad they got plugged in from the, uh, community events, which is kind of like a double, um, double bonus there, so. That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, and, uh, I'll, I'll wrap by saying something I think I've said three times now, maybe twice in front of this group. But, uh, first time here at the council meeting and that is, um, we've been talking about community and seeing people get out. Uh, we saw people at the meet and greet, uh, I saw, I saw you guys there too, which was wonderful. Um, but it's cool to see the streets filled and it's great to see people walking around downtown and, uh, hearing stories about how people get together in their neighborhood or, you know, somebody in the audience inviting me over for coffee. Maybe it wasn't just me, I think you invited everybody, but I just took it because I'll take coffee anytime. But, uh, we have a strong community in Robinsdale, uh, one that, uh, if you look around, our neighbors don't have. And I've heard from other mayors, who I will not name because I don't wanna get them in trouble, but the community that we have in Robinsdale is so strong that others are trying to figure out how to emulate that in their towns. And it's just something special that if you've lived here your whole life and you go live someplace else, I think you will realize the stark difference because I tell you, I've lived in other places and that's, this is, this is truly unique here. So for all the residents listening, please go out, meet your neighbors, continue to do what you do. And if you've not done that, I encourage you to go, uh, go out and meet some because it sounds like we got a pretty friendly community here. So thanks, everybody, for your time tonight. And is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay? See you next month. Right?
Yeah.